All right, let's go. You okay?
Yeah.
Okay, we're set. All right, thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, March 14th, 2019, meeting of the Belmont Planning Board. I'm Charles Clark. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. I call the meeting to order. This evening, we will have a public hearing on proposed amendments McLean District 3 and 4, and that'll be the sum and total of our agenda for this evening. Let me introduce the members of the Planning Board. Thayer Donovan is on my far left, Steve Pinkerton, Carl Haglund, Ed Stazek, and the pro-tem senior planner, Spencer Gober. Mr. Pinkerton, would you like to read the public hearing notice?
I will, thank you. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Belmont Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 14th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall, 455 Concord Avenue, to consider amending Section 6A of the Belmont zoning bylaw by making the following changes to the McLean District zoning district. In the senior living sub-district, Zone 3, allow senior-directed housing, increase the percentage requirement for affordable housing, alter the dimensional requirements, increase the setbacks for fences or walls, and change the parking requirements, number and location of spaces. And, in the research and development sub-district, Zone 4, allow McLean institutional, educational, and residential uses. These amendments are proposed to encourage development of Zones 3 and 4 in the McLean District zoning district. The complete text of the proposed zoning amendment is available for review at the Office of Community Planning and the Town Clerk's office. Anyone wishing to be heard on this issue should appear at this time and place.
Okay. I'm gonna flip this around a bit, and I think we can do this. We'll do Zone 4 first.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll do Zone 4 first, which is the proposed McLean, which is the R&amp;D parcel. Would you like to make your presentation?
Yes.
Talk to us about it. You can bring the microphone up if you want, or you can come here if you want to take your chair.
Since what I'd like to do is reference the graphics here, is it okay just to go over there?
Sure.
Need a microphone.
You need a microphone. You can take the microphone off, that, it's fine. It does, if you speak close enough, it does amplify it, but its main purpose is for the people who are watching us.
Thank you. And please introduce yourself.
We'll do. So, good evening. My name's Michelle Gujon. I'm the Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer over at McLean Hospital. Nice to see you all tonight. I've been involved with this project since 1996, when it all got started, so I'm gonna spend a few moments, just sort of giving a little bit of a context, because I know many of you I recognize, and you're very familiar with the whole concept behind the land use and the districts at McLean. Others, for whom this may be new, it's probably worth spending just a moment or two on it. So, back when the original development was pulled together and the parcels were rezoned to go along with the new district for McLean, a number of benefits also were involved in this process. There was attention to an expanded tax base, certainly the new town cemetery that's already in process, over 100 acres of open space. You see all of the green that was outlined in terms of all of this area here that has been made accessible. Transfer of land for the affordable housing that was built here, and also construction of the road that went up that was to be to these zones in order to access that, to really optimize the availability for units. So, the historic preservation has been recognized, and also, we have done some contributions to some of the traffic mitigation that's happened along Pleasant Street, as well as Mill Street over the years. So it's within this context. Originally, the Northland development that you see here for Zone 1A, 1B, and 2 has been fully built out. Unfortunately, Zone 3, the senior living sub-district, and Zone 4, the R&amp;D, despite having some very intense interest in the beginning, we were not able to successfully go forward with the developments for those sites. So at this point in time, we're now coming back to look at being able to bring those forward and be able to recognize the values, not only to the hospital, but to the town, of having those resources here as well. So, go to the next one. Thank you. So what I'm gonna talk a little bit about is Zone 4, because one of the things we thought was important in coming back to you with all of this would be to explain what would happen in Zone 4, as well as what would happen in Zone 3. So, Jack Dolly will talk about Zone 3, and he has a very fleshed-out proposal. What I'm gonna outline for you is our vision for Zone 4, and the simple reason that these things are gonna be separated in timeframe has to do with the fact that in order to do what we would like to do in Zone 4, which is construct a child and adolescent academic and residential campus, we need to raise the money to do that. And that, we expect, will take about five years to do. But we wanted to be able to share with you this vision, so you'll get a good sense of what would go on in Zone 3, what would go on in Zone 4, and how that might all work so nicely together. So what we're proposing here is to be able to pull together on this area here, you see outlined, this child and adolescent academic and residential campus. This will allow us to move our two schools that we already operate together, along with all of the support services that go with those, and have a dedicated entrance coming off of Pleasant Street for those services. This also allows us to continue with the original zoning here, and be able, in the long run, to have a R&amp;D, smaller R&amp;D facility still be there, and in between, to have the parking that would be necessary to support these two uses. So the reason we like these two to be able to coexist in that property, we'll still be within the 150,000-square-foot envelope, which is the original allotted amount for square footage, but also, it's gonna allow us to preserve a lot of the green area here that we have, and really construct what's going to be constructed, largely on already disturbed area where we formerly had other buildings and a parking lot. So it will still maintain the very important value of having the green space, the ability to have the campus still have the important feel that it had, because part of the reason putting the campus on the historic register, it's also the landscape features, as well as the buildings, that are important, and we want to preserve the really open sense of the campus. It's one of the major values of the facility. So, this is what we're proposing to do, and we're looking for the enlarging of the use for Zone 4 to be able to accommodate what we already do in Zone 5. We're still, nothing else will be changing, none of the dimensional requirements, none of the other prescribed restrictions that are in the zoning, so they would all remain the same. Okay? Thank you. I'm sorry? Yes. So, I've been reminded to also mention, as part of this, there is an elaborate memorandum of understanding with the town, and a number of parts that go with that, and one of the essential parts of that, there is a tax agreement. So certainly, the anticipation was the R&amp;D building would be paying taxes, so in the future, when that becomes developed, that will be additional to the tax base. And the other element for what we would be doing, we are a not-for-profit, so we would be arranging a payment-in-lie-of-taxes kind of thing with the town. So it's an important point to raise, that this would still be a revenue-generating use for Zone 4.
My understanding is that McLean isn't paying any taxes on that parcel at this point?
At this point, we do not, because part of also what was in the agreement here was, once the actual tax revenue eclipsed what McLean had paid, which it has several, many, many years ago with the Northland development, that that ceased. We were the only institution paying taxes.
So, are no taxes being paid on either 3 or 4 at this point, correct?
Correct.
There's no payment in lieu of taxes at this point?
Correct. Because of the agreement that eliminated that.
So, it isn't the Planning Board's role to negotiate a payment in lieu of taxes?
Mm-hmm.
But would you anticipate paying taxes based on the unimproved value of the site?
So I think that will all be a discussion put together when we actually have a much crisper vision of what we would be building on the site, because at this point, the hospital owns it, and there is no development on it.
So, we're four to five years from that?
That's my expectation, because of the fundraising. If we're successful and it goes faster, then we'd be delighted to move it faster.
Are you marketing the R&amp;D land at this point?
Not currently, no.
Have you been marketing it in the last three or four years?
We have had, it was actually under agreement up until about four or five years ago, and then, when we started to rethink what we would do with Zone 3 and 4 together, so that has been on a bit of a hiatus in that interval.
So, that was probably 2013 or so?
I believe it was like '14, '15, that timeframe.
But it hasn't been marketed since that time.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine. And the change in the zoning, would you put that up, Spencer?
Do you want the draft language, is that?
Yeah, the draft language. It's at the bottom, I believe.
There it is.
There it is.
Yes.
So, basically, what you're proposing is to reduce the potential size of the R&amp;D building, if it ever gets built, and extend whatever institutional uses that McLean has into the other portion of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to be clear on that.
And those, can someone tell me what the institutional uses are? Are they just traditional institutional uses, like classrooms and?
So, clinical services, academic services, and research. We also have a major research enterprise.
Does that include the residential services, also for patients?
Yes, yes, that's a part of a clinical service.
That would be part of the school, too.
Yes, and the schools, which are the academic.
Part of the school.
Yes.
But there's no other, no employee housing or anything like that?
No, no.
So, my other question is, is that, I was thinking about this when I read the memorandum of understanding, and I appreciate the, you know, the benefits that have come to the town in McLean as a result of the agreement, but, and I'm sure you've thought about this, and perhaps this is reflected in your payment in lieu of taxes potential agreement, that there was a payment partially in kind and partially not, consideration of $2.2 million to McLean to reduce the buildable square feet of the R&amp;D building.
Yes.
From what, $200,000 to $150,000?
Originally, $300,000, and then down to 200, and then to 150.
Down to 200, okay. So now, it would be like 75? Do we owe you more money, or do you owe us money at this point?
Well, the expectation is, when fully done, we'll be back at the 150,000. So, those payments were based on the design of what the square footages were gonna be as allocated in the major plan across all of the zones. So I don't think there is anything else, one way or the other, that has to be changing.
Well, I think we'll need counsel to take a look at that. I mean, it was clear that, when you read the memorandum of understanding, there's a clear intent that there is consideration paid by the town to reduce the
Yes.
the buildability of the site, and the town hasn't benefited from that, so at some point, that needs to be negotiated.
So, I would-
I think that's on the table at some point, or it should be at least reflected in how the payment in lieu of taxes is negotiated. Now, I believe that the value of this site and the other site are fairly much the same. They're in the eight to nine million-dollar range, and I think this site here is, I don't know, is yours in the eight and this is in the nine? They're both, the unimproved value of the assessed value, the unimproved land is like eight to nine million dollars. The tax, the tax burden is 11 and a half, 11 and a half on a mill basis. You can do the math in terms of that. I guess our, I guess my concern is initially on this, I think the payment in lieu of taxes would be a good thing. I think it needs to take that in mind, in the fact that there was consideration done almost 20 years ago, and there's been no financial compensation for the town in terms of that. And I think when we talk, when you talk with the town council
Mm-hmm.
about payment in lieu of taxes, that's a consideration. And that's frankly, a consideration for me as I look at this, at this point. That being the case, I'll open this up to comments from the audience about this portion of it. Please come forward, introduce yourself, and we'll go forward in terms of that. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
Hi, Jean Mooney, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. I'm channeling a little bit of my, of Judy Record right now, who any of us worked with 20 years ago on this, and so I'm here in her honor, and I'm also actually delighted that we're actually moving forward with this, and I think that the academic building is quite exciting. And so, I'm glad that this is all happening for Belmont, because we do need the revenue. So my comment actually is relative to the issue on this particular zone, when I looked at, printed out the amend notes here, that the uses weren't detailed first, and I know that, I don't know if it's worth putting into the bylaw, or into the, you know, the zoning, rather, those uses to enumerate, because they're enumerated, just to be clear, so the public knows what those uses are. But the bigger issue is the percentage of the breakdown of that zone, because now we're talking about, I think there is some square footage that was mentioned, Michelle mentioned, about 75 to 85,000 square feet? Yeah, half.
It'll be about, the way it's proposed right now, Michelle, it's like half R&amp;D and half school.
Right.
Seventy-five, seventy-five.
So, but the zoning doesn't reflect that, so I'm just looking at protecting, how do we protect when we're looking at, there's a pilot payment, and then there's an, then all of that, all of the R&amp;D, the R&amp;D sub-district, when I see R&amp;D, I think of for-profit. And when you see McLean uses tagged on, that's nonprofit.
That's right.
And so, I'm concerned about getting a sense, and if it belongs, I don't know the answer, if it belongs in the proposal, what that percentage is on a land basis, or how that would be carved up, in essence, so that we could get a sense, what are we setting aside that we know is strict for-profit R&amp;D versus the child and adolescent program, which I think is terrific? Thank you.
Thank you. I suspect that, I suspect that at some point, it'll have to be worded, this is in the payment in lieu of tax agreement, that it'll have language to the effect of the uses. So, for example, if it's, if it becomes all McLean, then there has to be some compensation, however, on the same kind of basis that the compensation would be for the part that's institutional.
Right, because the, one could, they could build out that section, in essence, re-expanding their campus.
That's right.
Which they, so then the question is, does the R&amp;D sit there for a while again, and then are we sitting there for another 10 years until, until that's developed, ergo, not receiving any taxes again?
Or until it's developed as a school again.
Right, exactly, right. So, it's that sort of, which way is the mission creep, and when are those things executed, and how do we protect Belmont, you know, expanding some tax base? Thank you.
I mean, the actual, you know, proposal to expand the services of the, of the hospital is noteworthy. I mean, you know, no, none of us disagree with that. It's a good thing. We represent the town of Belmont and the people of Belmont and the interests of Belmont. You represent the interests of McLean. So our long-term goal is to find commonality in that. So that's why we're asking, that's why we're asking the questions.
And I'm gonna hand this to Charlie, but just one last add-on is, I'd be curious in terms of the assessment of the property, because, you know, recent things about, you've got Kendall Square blowing up, you know, R&amp;D in the area, and there was just a recent article about-
They're about $9 million a piece for the unimproved value of the, each of the sites, I think.
So-
That's what the assessor says.
The red line brain train, you know, is going right up to, you know, Al-Wife, look at Watertown, what's happening?
Yeah.
And so, I think that we're not so far off from Al-Wife, so it's probably, might be a handsome piece of property for work.
Charles, Charles Harmon, resident of Woodlands 2. I have a question.
Sure.
The current zoning allows for 150,000-square-foot
R&amp;D building.
Building. That was what was bargained for, and that's where the 2.2 million.
Right.
Now we're talking a much smaller area where the R&amp;D might go. It would seem to me that there should be some cutback in the amount of the R&amp;D facility, otherwise, we're packing a lot more into the district than has been there, that was potentially there under the current zoning.
Well, I actually think, tell me if I'm wrong, in terms of this, so your maximum buildout for Zone 4 was gonna be 150,000
Yes.
square feet. What they're proposing is, they're gonna do approximately 70,000 square feet for the school and ancillary uses, and that, so the remainder would be about 75,000, which would be the potential R&amp;D, so that would equal the buildout that was proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Paulson?
Fred Paulson. We certainly agree with the Chairman's statement about it's so important to have the expansion of the hospital and the additional schools, and I think that is a very important step for the town and for McLean. I think the question I have is that, in addition to the obvious one, that the amount of real estate tax would be lower because we're cutting down on the size of the R&amp;D development. And the other question is that the original plans also called for the preservation of certain trees and certain open space, and maybe you've already answered that, but is that gonna all remain the same?
So, I think what you're referring to, there was a lot of energy around, you know, to protect the natural resources there, and we certainly are very respectful of that and have been through the process so far. I think what we'll have to do, that will be part of all of the site plan reviews, and when we look at specific design, and then what has to be involved. Fortunately, a lot of the area that we're talking about doing the building on has already had building on it, so we wouldn't necessarily have to do destruction of other kinds of trees.
Excuse me. Can you turn that microphone on, and then perhaps, if you're gonna respond?
Okay.
Because I think we're concerned with it. I just saw something in the back of the room.
Okay, yeah. He's giving-
My other question is about the traffic, and you were saying that there'd be a road that goes down to Pleasant Street that would service the schools and the R&amp;D?
So, sorry. The road is already built, that we're talking about, Olmsted Drive, which Okay. services the affordable housing units that are there right off of Tripella Road. So that's already built, and that will just be continued up to access Zone 3 and Zone 4.
And connect to Pleasant Street?
Correct.
And, there was a whole effort to study the traffic numbers and to achieve safe and doable traffic on the site and off the site, and are you looking at that question in terms of the change in uses? Is that going to change the type of analysis that was done before? Are we gonna have heavier traffic then from this site?
Please, please, please.
What I can tell you is that we have looked at those numbers, and fortunately, I believe for what we're proposing for Zone 4, there's not a whole lot of difference. The distribution of the numbers are specific to AM timeframes, PM timeframes, and then there's a trip total for the day. So we've been looking at that and think that we're pretty close to those numbers. That doesn't mean that we might not need to look more carefully at maybe the evening ones or so forth, but relatively close, and with some fairly minor adjustments. I think one of the other positive things, since you raised the traffic, would be that since the two schools already exist, and the traffic comes off Mill Street, which is already challenged, that traffic would be coming off Pleasant Street, and those tend to be off-hours kinds of things, so not only will the traffic not necessarily increase greatly, but will also be moving the less peak hour traffic to another side of the campus.
And what is your timing for when you want to have the zoning changed?
We'd like to have the zoning changed as soon as possible, so we can start the fundraising to really bring this vision forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just a quick point of, just a quick point of clarification.
Please introduce yourself.
Judy Fines, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5. Hi. I thought you said there would be a dedicated entrance off Pleasant Street to Zone 4, but you mean the existing one on Olmsted Drive, or?
What I, thanks for asking for that clarification. The actual entrance to the Zone 4, where the building for the Child and Adolescent Center would be, would be right off that exact same road. There's no separate road.
Thank you.
Roger Rubel, Precinct 5. The town has certain climate change goals and carbon goals, and with new development in town, and with the potential for development of the McLean, it'll sort of potentially be moving us in the wrong direction in terms of meeting our climate goals. So I'd like to suggest that in the zoning, it say that whatever is built on that site be zero net energy. In other words, that whatever energy is produced or purchased will balance whatever energy is being used, fossil fuel-based energy is being used on the site.
You're talking about, hold on a second, Roger, you're talking about the institutional use? You're talking specifically about the institution.
Anything that's built in Zone 4 be certified to be zero net energy?
I have a question for institutional use. Are there any institutional uses in Belmont that are proposed or being built that are net zero?
The high school.
The Belmont High School. How big is the Belmont High School? About 250,000, 450,000 square feet?
I don't know.
It's about 451,000 square feet. You're proposing 75,000. That's a good idea. Thank you.
Okay.
Good suggestion. Any other comments on this? This is good. You get all these comments out now, and you don't have to come up to me at Meet Belmont and ask me questions about it.
Right.
I just wanted to follow up on the traffic. Michelle, well, I should be directing this to Mr. Clark, but-
Reintroduce yourself, please.
Jean Mooney, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. On the traffic, I know that, so the school uses are going into the, to the new Zone 4 area, but you still have those, the buildings that were the existing, you know, those services are currently given. So, I'd imagine those aren't being mothballed, so I would think that there would be traffic or uses that would be going into those existing areas. So I'd be interested to know, when we look at overall traffic usage, that what is going into the existing space, because it's not, I don't think it negates, you know, they don't, I don't think they cross each other out.
Okay. Michelle, have you, you seem like you guys have thought about many of these issues, so you haven't-
Talking about this for a long time.
Yeah.
So, it's a fair point. I think what we're trying to really figure out, I mean, one of the challenges we have is our lovely 1890s buildings, which are lovely 1890s buildings. So one of the real opportunities here, in addition to building a new structure, would be to be able to relook at some of those older structures in a much more thoughtful way. So I think you raise an important point about that, what might they be retooled to do, but I think what we're mostly finding is that we'll probably have a repurposing of them to really have things work a lot better of what we already have, so in some ways, it actually will be less of a traffic generator, because we have very much constrained square footage for everything we do now, and it will certainly make for a much more comfortable and productive environment for our patients and staff, if we can spread things out a little bit without increasing the cars.
Any other comments from the audience regarding this? This part? Lauren, do you have a comment from the historical point of view?
I have, I'll make them now.
Yep.
Thank you. Lauren Meyer, Co-Chair of the Historic District Commission. The Historic District Commission is a partner with, in the, with the town and McLean in the memorandum of agreement, and I do wanna say that we've had a very constructive, positive, effective working relationship with McLean Hospital and with Northland on the- working relationship with, um, McLean Hospital and with Northland on the, um, uh, rehabilitation of historic buildings in the campus and the design of, um, new buildings. We are very, very interested in the, uh, zoning changes for both Zone Three and Four. And so we'd like to have an opportunity to just kind of get into the weeds with you a little bit about, just to find, you know, look over the, uh, the zoning amendment. I don't think we have to do this in a public setting, but, um, our, in the Historic District Commission's interest, of course, is that the historic landscape and buildings of McLean Hospital is, uh, you know, retained to the greatest extent possible. It is listed on the National Register of Historic Places and is, uh, really an important resource in Belmont.
Thank you, Lauren. Do we have, uh, thank you. Do, do we have additional comments from the audience before the board talks about this? Roger?
I, I wasn't going to talk until Zone Three, but, uh, given Lauren's, uh, comments, I think perhaps it's most appropriate.
Sure.
Um, can I give you?
I always have.
Yes, you may. It's not, I mean, for, 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 for somebody who's trying to reduce, um, yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, it, it strikes me as, um, I don't know.
My committee, uh, my name is Roger Colton, by the way, and I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct Six. And, uh, I chair the town's Energy Committee, which is charged with, uh, uh, pursuing the town's climate action goal. And, uh, what I'm going to say applies to both, uh, Zone Four and Zone Three. So what I've given you is, uh, this chart, which is, uh, uh, the most recent, recent emissions inventory for the town of Belmont. And as you look at this chart, you'll notice that, uh, the two biggest sources of emissions in, uh, Belmont are, uh, what's marked in yellow, uh, vehicles or transportation, and then what's marked in orange, which is, uh, natural gas. Now, assuming that no new development of McLean will heat with fuel oil, I, I, I would assume that it will either, uh, be heated and cooled with, uh, gas electric, well, heated with gas, uh, cooled with electricity. The point being here that the Energy Committee and others in, uh, in Belmont have spent thousands of hours over the last ten years, uh, working on reducing emissions with, uh, transportation and in buildings. And, uh, through these two developments, with one development, you could literally wipe out the, uh, the benefits that, uh, that we've achieved in the, uh, the last ten years. Um, and it bothers me that this has been pursued without conversations occurring with the, uh, the town entities that are charged with, uh, having an oversight and having activities, uh, on this type, uh, or this area. Uh, and I'm not going to stand up and say that these shouldn't be pursued at this time, but I think it is appropriate to suggest that we're way, way, way ahead of where we should be, that this whole process should be slowed down. The Board of Slickman should be, uh, brought into, uh, the process. Each of the, uh, town committees that has an institutional interest in some aspect, whether it's the Historic District Commission or the Energy, uh, Committee or the Housing Trust should be, uh, brought into the conversation. And it can't be done through the zoning bylaw. The other piece of paper that I handed you, I mean, we've been down this road before, right? Remember, uh, uh, when we worked on, uh, what is, uh, Zone Three? And the town, uh, Planning Board sought to impose unanimously sought to impose certain conditions and the town got sued and the town lost. And the piece of paper that I've handed you is the relevant page out of that, uh, court decision. And I just want to read two paragraphs out of it. The first paragraph saying, because I keep hearing, oh, well, we'll deal with that in site plan review. And that, that doesn't work. And we, we've been down that road before and we know that it doesn't work because the court said the limited discretion under site plan review should not have been extended to allow the planning board to make its own interpretation of what was best for the town. Wow, that's a pretty amazing, uh, sentence, but that's what the court said. That function is left to the legislative process, which was exercised when the town enacted in Section Six A, which was the zoning bylaw. So if it's not in the zoning bylaw, the court has said that the planning board, I mean, it says it right here, should not have been extended to allow the planning board to make its own interpretation of what was best for the town. And the court went on to say, again, the planning board had only limited discretion to determine if the bylaw was followed. So if it's not in the bylaw, it's, uh, it's not on the table. The condition that was being challenged at the time is an attempt to add terms to the bylaw that the legislative body of the town chose not to include. As a result, I find that the portion of the condition specifying the rental of affordable units was not reasonable and was beyond the scope of the authority of the planning board. So if it's not in the bylaw, is, the court has said, we, we can't raise it. We really need to slow this, uh, this process down. We really need to bring in, uh, the stakeholders. And I stand here as one of those stakeholders that believes, representing the Energy Committee, uh, or the folks interested in climate change, suggesting that, uh, we're not ready to do that. Uh, the process, we need to let the process, uh, uh, catch up. So thank you very, and everything I've just said also applies, so I won't stand up again for the next.
Thank you. My response to that is that, um, it's been my opinion, um, and, uh, we haven't moved in this direction and we probably should. And we've had, um, wonderful contributions from, uh, attorneys in town who have helped us when we've written zoning. My opinion is that before any zoning piece goes before the town, it should go through, um, a zoning attorney, a land use attorney, because they deal with these issues all the time and they work on the other side and they know how to get around them. So I have that in my mind. Thank you for bringing that up.
And I left out one thing. I'm sorry. Um, I agree with what Roger Rubel suggested. I actually, uh, came tonight, uh, expecting to talk about zero net energy buildings in both zones. But it's really not just simply the buildings. Remember, when you look at the emissions, it's both transportation and, uh, the buildings. So, yeah, the energy issues extend to issues such as, uh, such as parking. Uh, and that has very severe implication, or very substantial, severe isn't the right word, very substantial implications for our ability to achieve our climate action, uh, goals. So it's more, it includes buildings, but not limited to buildings.
Right. As I recall, when you, when you came and spoke to us, was it early? It was after the last town meeting, I think it was early this year. And to, uh, spoke about the, the committee and the goals, um, that you're the head of at this point or part of it at this point. Are you coming to town meeting to talk about this? Because I, I believe that one of the outcomes that you were talking about was forming a committee to look into this and you, you asked us if we wanted to be part of that, uh, at that time. And I, I believe we said that.
We did.
We did, that it was important and we wanted to be. So is that coming up at town meeting?
That, that won't come up at town meeting. We went to the Board of Slickman and asked the Board of Slickman, uh, whether they thought that was a good idea. And they said that was a great idea.
Okay.
But, uh, it was, or words to, words to that effect.
They said yes.
They said yes.
Yes.
Uh, of course, we are now in, uh, what is fondly known as budget season.
Yes.
And so I think that convening that committee, it, it, all else is set aside as we go through, we, I'm changing we's here, but as the town develops its budget, but as soon as we get by town meeting, as soon as we adopt a town budget, uh, that multi-committee, uh, uh, effort is going to be convened, yes.
We will, we will be happy to be part of that and we will be happy to be leadership on that.
That's great.
If that's appropriate.
This is an ideal example of why that's needed because it's got climate change, both on the transportation area and on the building. I don't want to dominate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on this part of it on Zone Four at this point in time? This, so this is a public hearing for both parts. So, um, uh, so if I don't hear, um, let me ask the board. Does the board have comments on what we've heard, what we've discussed, uh, on Zone Four? Or do we want to save that until the end and talk about everything?
I'll save mine for later.
Yeah, we'll save it till later. We'll talk about the whole thing as a whole. Okay. Um, so Jack, do you want to make your presentation at this point? You can carry your microphone. Just make sure you introduce yourself. We know who you are, but not everybody does.
Can you put the picture up?
Excuse me?
Put the picture up, the proposed zoning change.
The proposed zoning change. I think he will, he will in a bit.
Okay.
Yeah. Spencer, uh, would you make sure that you put up the proposed?
I saw it on, on Zone Four.
Yeah.
I saw it on three.
It's the, it's the red letter one and hold on a second. You're an attorney, right?
I'm an attorney.
You're an attorney. I figured.
Retired.
I don't think you can retire from being an attorney.
You can lapse, but you can't retire.
Give us your benefit.
Will this presentation be available online on the, on the center board?
It's already on there.
It is. I could literally go up because it was.
Maybe around three o'clock today?
Uh, so I, I looked, I looked last night. Okay. Too early.
So I, I believe Spencer, everything that shows up here is online and available. That's correct. So anything we discuss in public is available. Okay. I'm sorry, Jack.
Ready, sec, go.
Yeah, yeah. Ready, sec.
Good evening. My name is Jack Dolly. Uh, I am the president and CEO of a company called Northland Residential Corporation. And I, uh, thank you all for coming out tonight. And my presentation will be uniquely focused on Zone Three. Um, Spencer, if we could advance this for a second. A little bit about my firm, for those that aren't familiar with Northland. Northland, uh, like Michelle, has been involved with the McLean Hospital campus for quite some time. Uh, I believe I met Michelle in, in ninety-eight or ninety-nine. Uh, I signed a purchase and sale agreement with, uh, McLean and Partners at the end of ninety-nine for the acquisition, the permitting acquisition and development of what is known as Zones One A, One B, and Two, uh, otherwise known as the residential sub-district zones on the McLean Hospital campus. Those three parcels created, uh, well, we permitted them in the two thousand to two thousand five period, along with the Zone Three permitting and along, along with the Zone Four permitting. Um, and we commenced construction, uh, we acquired the property in March of two thousand five and started construction shortly thereafter and proceeded to build out a hundred and eleven, uh, townhouses on the three respective parcels. And we created an additional ten units in three rehabilitated, retained and rehabilitated, uh, buildings, uh, on each of those parcels. And namely, the Carriage House, uh, building, which is located, uh, just up on the left of Mill Street, um, and then Uppam House in eighteen sixty-four, about a thirty thousand square foot building and something called South Cottage. Um, uh, the property is, the constituency of the residents, uh, is really an active adult or an empty nester. It is not an age-restricted community, uh, if you will. In my parlance, it's an age-targeted community. What does that mean? Um, we design the floor plans and the, and the living space of the homes to be attractive, um, to, uh, an active adult such as myself, uh, an empty nester such as myself, uh, as opposed to young families with two point two kids, a dog, a guppy, and a stroller. Um, uh, those properties sold on an, for an average of about a million two, uh, over the course of the project. Um, we did, um, experience a rather unique recession, um, during our build out that slowed down our build out, uh, in the two thousand eight to two thousand ten period. But we came back, uh, rather robustly in the second half of two thousand ten and completed the project on or about the two thousand fifteen. Um, the project generates about two million dollars presently in reoccurring tax revenue. Um, it was about another million plus worth of one-time fee income, building permit fees, occupancy permit fees, contributions toward sewer I and I removal and the like. Last time I did a survey, um, which I've done a couple times, uh, we determined that there was something less than five school-age, um, kids living within the hundred and twenty-one units. I can't speak for what it is today, um, but I, I do not believe it is substantial. Um, the, the Zones One A, Two, One A, One B, and Two, uh, access their zones via the Mill Street, uh, McLean Hospital entrance. There is no vehicular, uh, exit or egress permitted down the existing Olmstead Drive to, um, Pleasant Street. That was something that was strictly prohibited in the zoning that was enacted in ninety-nine or ninety, ninety-nine. Um, there are emergency access, uh, access gates, um, that do connect Zone Two to Olmstead for the purposes of emergency access if needed. Um, so, so I'm the developer. I am the one developer that has actually developed one of the parcels created by Town Meeting in nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, and, uh, McLean and Partners and I have remained in close contact with each other, um, as it relates to Zone Three. And we've had on and off conversations, uh, Michelle and I for, probably since two thousand ten about that parcel, uh, and about, uh, perpetuating a similar use to that which, uh, I created and that which was zoned in those three other parcels onto that zone. Um, we came together, uh, a couple of times and very robustly in February of last year, uh, and began an in-depth conversation about, um, just what I, just what I described for Zone Three. So, uh, if we can move on for a second. Just to remind and level set everyone, what is Zone Three? Zone Three is a twelve point eight-three acre parcel of land. It is accessed by an existing road that McLean Hospital built off of Pleasant Street. This is the Star Market, uh, building and parking lot. This is the back Pleasant Street, um, uh, curb cut to the Star Market parking lot. And Olmstead Drive comes in here, rounds the corner. There is a curb cut here to access Waverly Oaks, uh, the town's Waverly Oaks community. It climbs up the hill, across the property and, and terminates presently about here. This is Zone Four out in here. This is the old, uh, I don't know what the name of that building was. Um, it's no longer there. Higgins, Higginson Building, it's no longer there. That's Zone Four. So this, Zone Three is outlined by blue. The map is oriented with south to the bottom and north, uh, to the top. So the, so, and topography rises, um, from top to bottom, uh, and a little bit from, uh, west to east. This is Zone Two of the Woodlands at Belmont Hill. Waverly Oaks is here, open space, Junction Brook out here, the McLean Institutional Campus here, and then of course, the historic Uppam Bowl right here. Uh, there are two existing structures on the property. Uh, one is the former Superintendent's Residence and/or Office Building, as it's referred to in various documents, um, and a second, which is the Chapel Building. The memorandum of agreement and the Historic Preservation Agreement that Ms. Meyer spoke to a moment ago, um, calls out both of those buildings. Um, the, in my parlance, uh, the chapel is item one of the memorandum agreement, Historic Preservation Agreement, and it characterized as a must-keep, must-save, must-do-something-with. Um, the Superintendent's House, uh, Office Building is, would like to keep, be nice to keep. There's some, uh, density bonus, uh, incentives, if you will, for keeping it. Um, uh, when I get into my plan, you'll see that I am not proposing to keep it, but I obviously am proposing to keep the Chapel Building. There is an existing sewer line that, that runs across the property from this northwest, northeast corner, excuse me, to the south and then along the bottom. And then it runs down Olmstead Drive, uh, out to Pleasant Street. The property is completely utilited, not a verb, not a word, not a noun, but sewer, water, gas, and electric has been run up into the property, um, to service, uh, both Zone Four, Zone Three, and it provides, uh, some continuity of, uh, connection, uh, to, to, to not only Zone Two and the Woodlands, but also the McLean Hospital campus. Um, it's semi-wooded. There's this little bit of an opening here. Um, there's sort of a little bit disturbed here. The sewer line, um, is sort of partially grown in at present. There's some cluster of trees here and there. The zoning bylaw does require, um, that, uh, close pay, close attention is paid to natural features and that is not. that is not something that we have looked to change in the bylaw when we get there. Trees are good. That's the parcel. Spencer, if I could ask you to go on for a second? Again, more history. As Michelle and I first knew them, ARC, American Retirement Communities, was the original purchaser of, or permit, contract holder for the parcel. They became Brookdale Senior Living at some point. They tied up the property about the same time that I did, in early two thousand, late ninety-nine, and paralleled my efforts to get permits for Zones One A, B, and Two at that time. What they got a permit for was a seven-building, six-story, a seven-building, six-story, six-hundred-thousand square foot CCRC or Continuing Care Retirement Community, consisting of four hundred and eighty-two units, which would consist of a mix of independent living units, assisted living units, nursing bed units, and I believe some Alzheimer's memory care or memory impairment The property is this sort of, if you had young kids, they like to play with these things called Transformers. So this is sort of the Transformer Man Building. You can see that it pretty much consumes most of the site. It had four, it called for four hundred and fifty parking spaces to be located on-site, much of it under this building. And it had a maximum height at its highest point. And someone will ask me what that was. I don't know. Where that was, I don't know. But it was approximately sixty-seven feet above the ground. So this is what was permitted, about forty units to the acre. It was accessed via Pleasant Street, via the new driveway that was ultimately built. It had a significant service need. You know, it had staff, deliveries of food, linens, and the like. And so it was, you know, it was going to be a busy place. It was closely scrutinized through the permitting process, but ultimately did have a permit. The bylaw as it is written requires that thirty of the non-nursing beds, which were capped at, I believe, three hundred and thirty units, would be required as affordable units at a hundred and twenty percent AMI. That is what was litigated. That was what was written into the zoning, and the planning board put a condition in the permit for something different than that, namely an eighty percent AMI threshold. That thirty of the, of the four hundred and eighty units, or the three hundred and thirty units translates in percentage terms to about nine percent of the non-nursing beds. And they were allowed to be phased into the development as it was built out, meaning there was not a requirement to build thirty bed, thirty affordable units first, and then a market rate unit, that there was some proportionality throughout the build-out. So this is what was permitted. Again, a seven-building, six-story, six-hundred-thousand, four hundred and eighty-two-unit project. It didn't come to pass. We know. That's why I'm here. So if we can move on. I am not in the assisted living, memory care, nursing business, although at times I feel like I might be. We build residential for-sale housing. I have done this since nineteen eighty-five. Most of my career has been toward, been focused on seeking out opportunities to create what we call active adult, empty nester, age-directed senior housing units for folks that look like me, and maybe some of you. That is otherwise known as age-restricted. We do not choose to do age-restricted as a practice. In fact, I have de-aged-restricted a number of projects because the financing associated with large-scale, age-restricted projects is a very, very difficult thing to obtain. Banks have been burned by it, and therefore it is not an asset class that is, for seniors, that banks are favorable. So what we did was, we came up with a site plan that was, the notion behind it always was, is how do we integrate or perpetuate a use similar to what we believed was well-received in the market, well-received by the town, and by every standard that I have heard was successful, i.e. the Woodlands. So what we've done is, we've plotted a series of either duplex footprinted sized structures or triplex or four-unit buildings. We have literally taken the footprints that we built on the adjacent parcels as building blocks, as Lego blocks, to work from a land-planning perspective and begun to lay them out. We have also then gone to the northeast corner of the property and tried to introduce some density. The zoning allows up to four hundred and eighty units and then some density bonuses, so the parcel can hold or handle a fair amount of density. So the notion was that to transition the massing from Zone Two to similar massing, and as we got further away from both Zone Two and, most notably, the historic Uppam Bowl, and closer to the institutional character of the McLean Hospital campus, to introduce a larger building, what we call in our building, a garden-style or a multi-story flats building. And we're, and so that's what these two buildings are. We have two, I'll call them single families, connected at a garage in this little corner right here overlooking Uppam Bowl, sort of mirroring what we have here. We have the Chapel Building here that would be retained, as is required, and converted to some form of residential use, two, three, four units, similar to what I did in the, at the Carriage House or in the Carriage House, which is four units, and in the Uppam House, which is nine units. You know, this is a diagram. This isn't a final site plan. This is, this is a schematic drawing. So what this image is trying to convey is, again, utilizing Olmsted Drive, bringing this road in at the lower end. Early plan brought it in opposite this curb cut or emergency access gate of Zone Two. However, there's a cluster of trees in here that are worthy of saving, so we moved it down the hill to align it with where the sewer line pops out. Same thing up here. This is an existing, very large oak tree, so this road comes up above it, again, trying to utilize the same approach to, you know, looking at the natural resources that are there and respecting where impossible. Running a road in to the site and double-loading it with townhouses of the same scale here, thirty-six feet height, and down along this bottom tier. Junction Books is way, way over here. We're not in any resource area to Junction Brook. We're outside of the hundred-foot setback requirement. And then two larger buildings. These are flats buildings. They would be four-story flats buildings. And they would have, each have their own parking underneath it. One would be accessed here, and the second access would be come in here, come in here. We've played with connecting these two buildings in between both above-ground and underground. We've also played with bending the top of this building to the left, but at this juncture, this is the plan that, you know, that we're working with. This plan represents a hundred and twenty-five non-age-restricted units that are designed, marketed, and tailored to a senior audience. They would be approximately thirty-four woodland-style units, which are two and three bedrooms, each with a two-car garage, and approximately ninety-one to two-bedroom units in these two buildings and the chapel. We would retain and reuse the Chapel Building. The overall density of this plan is about a little less, little more than five less than the plan I showed you before at forty. Our townhouses would meet the same architectural design standards and metrics as that which exists in the residential zones, which require they be no taller than two and a half stories to thirty-six feet. Flats building would be four stories above an underground garage. Overall parking would be, like you see here, about half of the ARC plan. The townhouses have a two-car garage, so the parking is called for to be two units per townhouse unit, and approximately one and a half units, one and a half spaces per flat unit. The present zoning calls for one space per unit, but obviously it's a much different population. There is a need for some guest-service spaces that would be scattered out throughout the community. If we use the same math that we have over here and sort of translate it over here, over to Zone Three, we believe that somewhere around one-point-six million dollars in reoccurring annual tax revenue could be created here. And that can be converted into some form of bonding capacity, depending upon interest rates. There's also non-reoccurring revenue in the way of building permit fees, sewer I and I fees, and things of that nature. In earlier discussions with the planning board and planning staff, we were encouraged to consider a different approach to affordable housing than that which is called for in the present zoning bylaw. And we came, came to the planning board in mid-February, I believe it was, and proposed a ratio of sixteen percent affordable units against the unit count. And if you apply sixteen percent against a hundred and twenty-five, it would create twenty affordable units. And we also lowered or changed, are proposing to lower or change, the income eligibility threshold from a hundred and twenty percent AMI to eighty percent AMI. If I can go to the next slide, please. This is a compare and contrast. I don't think it requires much, many words other than to look at it. Four hundred and eighty-two on the left, approximately a hundred and twenty-five on The zoning bylaw does need to be amended for this vision. It needs to be amended in five specific areas of the bylaw. The first section is, you know, six A, one point, six A point one, point two is to amend, really, the preamble clause of the senior housing, senior living, senior living sub-district to permit non-assisted living and/or a CCR type of use. Six A point one, point two, point A needs to be amended. The language needs to be expanded effectively to permit independent living dwelling units, including side-by-side, attached single-family dwellings, multifamily flats for seniors and active adults. There's a lot of words in that particular clause, so I didn't type them all here. It'd get too dense. To delete the age-qualified occupancy requirement and reinforce that it's a senior-directed community. To amend the inclusionary housing requirement, to comport with that which we have represented we're willing to do, that being sixty percent, sixteen percent, excuse me, sixteen percent of the unit count at an eighty percent AMI. There are some minor amendments for size, composition, parking retaining, while I know that will strike many in the audience as way-too-broad a statement. It truly is. Minor adjustments there, namely parking, one per unit. We need to adjust that. The parking requirement is also its own section. Parking and access is what it's called, six A point three, to amend parking location layout for space count and underground parking and guest service parking requirements. Well, self-servingly, I will say they are minor adjustments. They're important adjustments for you, the planning board, the audience, and Town Meeting to consider, but I think when looked at fairly, they are relatively easy to understand. Next slide, please. So a quick summary, you know, I am the applicant. I'm not a new guy. I'm an old guy. I've developed on the site. I'm well-known both on the hill and throughout the town. The product is, it's a proven product. I've been doing it for thirty-four years. I'm doing it on four other sites right now. I did a hundred and twenty-one of them on the site. The market is well-established. Reducing the projects from a four hundred and eighty-two to a hundred and twenty-five, not a hundred and four, sorry about that. It's a significantly scaled-back project. It's not six hundred thousand square feet. It's not sixty-seven feet tall. It's not four hundred and eighty-two units. There's a mix of housing type in here. It's not all townhouses. There's some one-bedrooms, some two-bedrooms, and some three-bedrooms. There, it's easily, I'll say accessible, meaning in the flats building, there is an elevator building. It's underground secure parking. Units can be designed to allow for aging in place quite easily in that kind of model. This plan, this vision, would generate twenty new SHI-eligible housing units at an eighty percent, at the eighty percent AMI income eligibility level, generate a little over, little, somewhere around a million six of reoccurring tax revenue at build-out, one-point-one of non-reoccurring permit fees. The traffic is well-established. We know what the traffic is. All we have to do is look next door. And we would continue our historic preservation of significant buildings on this campus, which I think I had done. So I'll raise traffic, and then I'll sit down. A memorandum agreement has a traffic mitigation and monitoring sub-agreement in it of one of many. The parcel was earmarked for about, I'm going to round the numbers to make this conversation easy, eleven-hundred-and-fifty-unit daily traffic counts coming and going from the site, around mid-thirty AM coming and goings, peak AM coming and goings, and around ninety PM coming and goings. This plan comports well with all of those metrics, using real data derived from measuring the counts that come and go on a daily basis from Zones One A, One B, and Two. So I'll stand in front of this radiator, get even hotter, and answer any questions that there might be.
We put that there just.
Yeah, right. I'm done.
Spencer, would you put up the proposed changes, the red line changes? So these are the red line changes in the zoning for the senior residents, the senior living district. And as you can see, they're extensive, there are very, there are some specific items that are changed in here, but when we look at this, we see this as a substantial change in what was proposed and what was agreed on by the town. The developer is, if you want to build this project, I would hire him. He's a good developer. He's got, he's got good ideas. He's got good history on things. He's been responsive to us on affordable housing. The question is, what does the town feel? And basically, the changes that are being proposed here and in the other one, I'll talk more about this later, are relatively, they're small points, they're less than five percent, but they're significant changes. They change what was agreed on in the Memorandum of Understanding, and they change what the goal of the zones are. The difference between the genetic composition of a human being and a chimpanzee is less than one percent, but it makes all the difference in the world. These make all the difference in the world. And so we need to hear now for what the town thinks about these, about these changes. So we open up the public hearing now. We open up for people to come and talk and make comments on the presentations.
Hi. I'm Rachel Heller, co-chair of the Housing Trust and resident of Precinct Three. I do want to acknowledge- I do want to acknowledge that the proposal has changed over the last few weeks, and it is nice to see that there are more affordable homes being included in the development in greater density. That being said, we all know that housing is very expensive here, and home prices far exceed incomes. We have a great need for affordability here in Belmont. Almost a quarter of our residents qualify for affordable housing. And the good news is, we are making progress. We have, in the last year, the town has approved a housing production plan. The town meeting has dedicated C P A funds for affordable housing. The rezoning done on Pleasant Street can really add to our housing stock, and I know that the planning board is currently considering an inclusionary zoning proposal that would strengthen our inclusionary zoning policies. Those are all great. The housing production plan was a really big accomplishment for our town. It was a community process, we learned about the needs of our community, we were able to identify strategies, create a plan for development. And one of the most important things about the housing production plan is that we need to make progress for it to really work for us and to do, to really benefit the town. So, right now, we have an approved housing production plan. That means that the state has signed off on it, says this follows what a housing production plan should do. To actually give Belmont more control over the kind of development that happens here, we need to actually make progress and show the state that we're developing housing. And that would lead to a certified production plan. Right now, Belmont needs three-hundred-and-thirty-seven more homes to get to the state's ten percent benchmark of affordability. This is a requirement, we all know, for every community. It doesn't mean that we're done when we hit that ten percent, but it's a standard that every community should hit. And once you get to that ten percent, then we have full control. We decide how we build housing going forward, rather than having development happen to us. This property in McLean is really one of the few opportunities we have to make significant progress, if not actually get, to the full ten percent. And so, I think it's important that we really look at this opportunity, and we make sure that McLean is getting what McLean needs out of it, and Belmont is getting what we need out of it. And furthermore, we need more rentals. This whole, this whole proposal is homeownership. Renters in Belmont earn half the income of homeowners, and forty-four percent of our renters are considered cost-burdened. The state needs more rentals, and that's why the state will count a hundred percent of a rental development as affordable towards our ten percent, if a quarter of that development is affordable at eighty percent of the area median income. That means by doing a much denser development with twenty-five percent affordability, that's a rental, we could really move forward, if not hit that ten percent benchmark. The Housing Trust has proposed that we do a local initiative program, a L I P, also called the Friendly Forty-B, and this is a way that the developer and the town can work together to get twenty-five percent affordability and to, again, move forward in a big drastic way in meeting our needs in the town and also hitting the ten percent. So, in closing, I think we can do a lot better. Again, I'm glad to see that there's been an increase in affordable units, that's wonderful, it's great to come down from one-hundred-and-twenty percent to eighty percent. We can do better, we need more. I think we need to slow this down, I think we really need to work together with McLean and figure out how to make sure that we're getting to mutually beneficial, we're each getting what we need out of this. So, I hope that the planning board will slow this down a little bit, and let's really work together. Thanks.
Anybody else? Come forward.
Hi, Charles Harmon, again. Looking at this project and comparing it to Freedom Commons, the failed project, this is a huge improvement. I think that, looking retrospectively at Freedom Commons, it would have been a disaster for the town in terms of the amount of traffic that it would have generated, notwithstanding, and also, maybe to a lesser extent, because some people don't care about it, but it had a very negative aesthetic effect. It would ruin the sightlines of Belmont Hill, at least looked at from the Waverly area because of the height of the buildings. That said, the Woodlands Two community has definite interest in this project, and so far, it has been frozen out of it. We have not been, none of our concerns have been addressed or discussed. We're hopeful that that will change in the future, but at least from Northland's point of view, it appears that they're somewhat resistant to that idea. We have, we still haven't talked to McLean, and I'm sure that we'll find maybe more receptive ears there. But I think it's very important that our concerns be heard before the zoning is adopted, particularly given what Roger Colton said about this decision that the design and site plan review, you're limited in what you can do. So, if there's something that we want that's not specifically mentioned in the bylaw, then maybe we don't have the ability to get it done. So, it would be much better to work things out with the developer and get things spelled out pretty well in advance. Another thing, I just, thank you for sharing the proposal with me. I looked at paragraph three, which is not on the screen, but I'm alarmed. Paragraph three suggests, and this isn't anything on Northland, paragraph three says there's still a maximum density of four-hundred-and-eighty units on this property. And, I mean, I realize that's not what's proposed, but assuming this fails, four-hundred-and-eighty units is just much too much.
Freedom's coming, didn't happen, right?
Shouldn't happen, shouldn't happen. It should be a much lower number. So, that needs to be dealt with, too. It should not be four-hundred-and-eighty units. One-hundred-and-twenty-five units would be ideal, but whatever it is, it should be way, way below the four-hundred-and-eighty. That is, that's, we're talking about potential disaster if that stays the way it is. So, thank you.
So, you're suggesting that, that that part of the zoning needs to be changed?
Yes, I am.
Which, which is a substantial change in terms of the density than what's proposed?
Yeah, what's proposed is one-hundred-and-twenty-five. As I said, it's a vast improvement over what was previously proposed, and we have no problem with that density, but...
You can't time down...
But I think, just seeing that four-hundred-and-eighty's still a potential, assuming this goes down somehow, I think that's just, that should be unacceptable to the town, not only to the Woodlands Two community, where we would be, probably have shadows on our property if, if the, if something equivalent to Freedom Commons were to be built there.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Gloria Leipzig. I'm in, live in Precinct Five, and I'm a member of the Board of the Belmont Housing Authority. I want to thank McLean's for coming forward on developing this parcel, and I think many of us have been waiting a very long time for the opportunity to create more housing in Belmont. I want to note that ten years ago, Waverly Woods opened on one of the parcels designated in the nineteen-ninety-nine agreement between the town and McLean. As, I believe Michelle was talking about, forty apartments for low and moderate-income households were developed on one-point-three-four acres of land, and those townhouses and flats ranged from one-bedroom to four-bedroom apartments. We now have the opportunity to do more. Parcel Three consists of twelve acres, and the original zoning, as Jack said, allowed for over four-hundred-and-fifty units in a continuum-of-care community and buildings up to five or six stories high. Certainly more than thirty-four large townhouses and eighty-five, or ninety one- and two-bedroom condos can be built on this property. So, forty townhouses and garden-style apartments can be built on one-point-three-four acres. I encourage McLean and the developer and the town to think about how many more condos or units that we can develop on what is effectively eight times the space used for Waverly Woods. I would also like to urge McLean and the developer to consider a mix of rental housing and condos. The housing production plan, as Rachel noted, had forty-four percent of renters in Belmont are cost-burdened, and certainly judging by the waiting list for public housing in Belmont, both senior housing and family housing, there is a real need for more affordable rental housing in town. One other comment, I think that everyone's been referring to, is the sort of confusion around the zoning. We are talking about building townhouses and flats, where somehow, we've talked, Jack has talked about raising the percent of affordability to sixteen percent. However, that does not mirror the current inclusionary zoning bylaw, which requires fifteen percent affordable, but also that all, all types of housing would be included in that affordability, including the townhouses. If we want to at least mirror the intent of the inclusionary zoning bylaw, I think more than sixteen percent of the units should be affordable to compensate for the fact that not all the, all the units at McLean's, or all the fifteen percent, or sixteen percent of the units that he's talking about making affordable, would not be representative of the entire development, would only be included in the two four-story buildings. This is, I agree, this is one of the best opportunities that we have here in Belmont to address the housing needs of seniors and young families, and I hope we make the most of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification on this, as you know, the, McLean District stands on its own as the zoning district, so it's inaccurate to, to impute that they're, they're not reflective of it. When we change the inclusionary zoning, and when we change the zoning on this, that may happen, but it hasn't happened at this point. The developer was responsive in terms of that, the developer was also responsive to the, to the suggestions that we made to increase the, the number of affordable units by moving them into the, into the flats building. So, we talked about that, we haven't agreed on anything, but, but that was the proposal that came back to us. So, he was responsive to us on that. We have not agreed on anything, the zoning is not in place, so I just wanted to say that he responded to that with the best of intentions, and he was listening to what we had to say.
And I agree, I mean, he did go from the ten percent, which he initially proposed at the first meeting.
We said to go beyond what was in the zoning to have additional units, that it didn't have to be same, 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 which I know is in the inclusionary zoning, but this is different. And when the zoning gets written on this, it doesn't make sense to have affordable units, these big townhouses. There's, there has to be a trade-off on that.
I absolutely agree. I absolutely agree that there needs to be a trade-off, and I would hope it'd be higher than sixteen percent.
Okay, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Sumner Brown. I was hoping to hear more about traffic mitigation. Traffic is a sore point with, with us, and as a town meeting member, I assure you that the possibility of this passing would be enhanced if there were some vigorous traffic mitigation efforts made. Sue Bass has suggested a shuttle bus, she can't be here tonight, unfortunately. So, town meeting members don't like traffic, and they're going to look at the increase in the square footage in these two zones and think, there's got to be more traffic. So, that's, that's my, my story.
That's a good point. Thank you. We're concerned about that. We're concerned about traffic.
Hi, I'm sorry. Hi, Michael McNamara.
Yeah, you're on.
Sorry. Hi, Michael McNamara, I'm a town meeting member, Precinct Seven, and I just want to say, I really appreciate the fact that we're trying to go up in affordable housing. When I was shoveling, one of the many snow outs that we're facing nowadays for my grandfather, who's eighty, lovely guy, I was thinking about how fortunate I am to have him in, in our, in our neighborhood, so I can see my grandfather and sort of engage with him. But I was very concerned, because I know a lot of people, a lot of older seniors are really struggling. They're really stressed when it comes to the, the cost that they pay, the taxes they pay. They went along with the high school, they went along, I'm sure with the D P W and the police department, I'm sure they all feel these are important things. But we need to do more to cover them. And I understand that a lot of older people also are, could eventually sell their homes and maybe, you know, downsize, they're going to go to a lower level, a less big house. So, I feel like it's concerned that they won't be able to come by here, there's no affordable housing for them. So, if they have to go, you know, ten miles, twenty miles to find something that's more affordable, it's going to be really disheartening for them to commute to see their kids or grandkids, that's a little disappointing. So, I would hope that we could have a bigger discussion about making more affordable housing. I see on this list right here, it needs to be edited, but it says ten percent, so I would hope that would be a lot different than just ten percent. We can do more. The communities around us are doing more, we should really be leading, Belmont should be leading the communities nearby. And I feel it's really disappointing, because also I heard about, how much would each of those town costs, the townhouses cost roughly? I sort of had a question about that as well.
Like, a million and a half, Jack?
Per? Per-house? Well, I, I just would say that, as a younger person, there's no way I could ever afford that in ten lifetimes. I'm sorry, it's just not going to happen.
Maybe ten.
No, I don't even think then. And I'm thinking, all the young families, all the older folks, there's no way they're going to be able to afford all that. So, I think it's very harsh to say that, well, we can maybe do like fifteen or sixteen percent affordable housing. I think we need to do better, I really do. I mean, if, if we're selling them for that much money, there are a lot of people in the town that are stressed, we can do better than this, we really need to. We have responsibility to our older folks. As younger folk, when I get old, I want to be able to have a place to live. So, I really feel like this is an important thing. Thank you. And I would just say, finally, I really hope that the older folks who are watching this and listening or reading in the Belmont media would pay attention to this when it comes election season, and remember that we need to vote for people who are understanding of their needs, and my needs, and everyone's needs. We look together as a community to make sure that we're all covered together. Thank you.
Joe.
Thank you, Mike. Hi, guys. I'm Reverend Joe Zarro. I'm a resident of Precinct Eight, I'm also on the Affordable Housing Trust, recently appointed in September, pretty new to this, moved to Belmont in two thousand fifteen, oh, no, two thousand thirteen, sorry. And so, kind of still learning a bit. I have, I am one of those people with two kids and several guppies and a dog. I think that undeveloped land is so valuable, such a tremendous resource, and this was laid aside for a community need that was identified. And to compare the, the community care facility to this project is comparing apples to oranges, because that was allowed to be that big and allowed to be what it was because it was meeting a fundamental community need, which is keeping our seniors in our communities. And this has no age restrictions, this has no, has, I think, pretty basic affordability. I do appreciate the responsiveness, I really do, to lowering the A M I and to be thinking about affordability. But we can't take this zoning back. Once you build out on this land, there's no, you know, we need to make sure that we get this right, that there's really a golden opportunity here to make progress on our affordable housing plan, to, to not go backwards on our climate goals, maybe even go forwards by having energy-efficient buildings. So, I'm here to just simply speak to the fact that this is a great opportunity, I'm really excited about. I think Zone Four, the vision for that is excellent. I think the idea of, of developing a significant portion of this property, of preserving that chapel, McLean's chaplain invited me to the facility and did a spiritual history of McLean, it was great, and to preserve those buildings is great. I'm really excited about the potential here. And I actually think it's, you know, no offense to Northland and this project here, which is actually, if this was zoned in already residential land, this would be, this would be a great project. But this was a parcel that was laid across for a specific community need, and with all respect to Northland, I think it'd be squandering some of that potential of this land. I think that there's a way to continue to work with McLean and the town and the stakeholders of the Energy Committee, the Affordable Housing Trust, in order to really meet the needs of Belmont and McLean, so that we can both realize our visions. Because I really believe in what McLean does, I've visited people in that hospital who are being tended to in their darkest days, and I think it's tremendous we have that here.
Thank you. I should say, by the way, since you introduced yourself with your honorific, this is Dr. Cole Haglund here, I'm Dr. Charles Clark.
Yes, yeah, 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 I know.
We need honorifics when we introduce ourselves.
Sorry.
Thank you.
All right, I'm Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Hi, Jean Mooney, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six again. I do have to say that Jack's, Northland's development, you know, the buildings are terrific. I've had many meetings at friends' homes up there, and... I've, um, had many meetings at friends', uh, homes up there, and it is, um, beautiful work that they do. That being said, um, you know, the devil is in the details, and, and I was actually gonna get back to what Charlie and both Michael brought up earlier, um, is not only were the, you know, four hundred and eighty units there, but it still says six hundred thousand, um, square feet. So, I, which brings me to, um, where Michael's question was, is I'm really interested in the, in the four, thirty-four Woodlands units and the ninety-one one and two bedrooms, I'd really like to see, what is the essential price point for each of those, and what's the, um, you know, approximate square footage? That has to have, they mu- must have an idea of what that is, because right now, the entry point, and getting back to not, not affordability, the sense of, right now, entrance point into Northland units are one point three, or, or more, if you look at the real estate transactions.
The resales, yeah.
Right. And so the question is, you know, um, where, where the, where's the entrance point for some of these units, and just how large are we? Which gets back to, could we, you know, be having more units, in terms of the density question that was brought up earlier? Could we be having, you know, more units, and at a price point which would enable more people to enter? And so I, I would very much like to see, um, this, the breakdown on their graphic with the associated square footage, um, and, 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 and price area. And then the last thing, getting back to, um, the climate, is whether or not we can request or have, you know, electric charging, getting back to the climate, if that is something that, you know, is a requirement.
I think, I think that.
I presume they would want to do that, it's a sort of a.
I think that's something further down, and, and I think for the price points and all of that, I don't think that's relevant now. Um, that's, that, that's, unless we did something with the affordable, um, zoning and all that, uh, the thing. I, I think the, you know, within the context of what the zoning says, the developer should be able to sell his units for what he thinks he should sell his units for. We can restrict the, you know, the type, and, you know, and all that, and we can have affordability, you know, components. But the market is what the market is, and it should be respected.
So the question then is whether or not, do we have more units that are, you know, that are, that are smaller, or it, it's, if we're allowing, still allowing six hundred thousand square feet, and, and the, the four hundred and eighty-one, there's, you know.
I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna address that in a couple minutes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Betsy.
Hi. Betsy Lipson, precinct six, and also co-chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. My comment is not actually so much related to this specific proposal. Um, I'm just really sensitive to what I feel like is basically dog whistle comments, um, by the developer around developing housing for people that look like him. People like him, people, and, you know, as we look around this room right now, I think one of the objectives of, um, many of us who show up at these meetings is to diversify our town by income, and very often in our country, that means also by race. And so when we are allowing somebody to step up in a meeting and say something like that, and not get called out, I find it upsetting. And so that's one.
Mr. Paulson, do you have a comment?
Fred Paulson, precinct one. I had two points that I wanted to, uh, cover. One is sort of on the merits, and secondly, what we would perhaps recommend to the planning board as to how to go forward. The McLean, uh, property includes, as has been indicated, twelve point eighty-three acres, and it is the last sizable parcel of unbuilt-upon properties to which, on which to provide significant affordable housing. In Roger Colton's, in my memo, that was dated January twentieth, um, there are three documents that address housing for aging in Belmont. The Comprehensive Plan, the Housing Production Plan, and the Age Friendly Belmont Report. None of these reports or plans identify a housing need for additional large luxury townhouses or condominiums. The housing needs for the aging that have been identified include smaller housing units and more affordable housing units, and I think has been indicated before, rental units. Instead, um, we're talking about only sixteen percent, or twenty affordable units under this current proposal. We're gonna continue with a number of townhouses, thirty townhouses, um, a number of, uh, two and, two-bedroom houses, senior houses, but none of them really meet the pressing need for affordable housing and the type of housing that is amenable to people of lower income. So the question is, how do we proceed? And it seems to me there are two parts to it. One is that the planning board was starting with a premise that, um, the developer could move ahead with sort of small modifications to the existing zoning in Zone Three. But remember, twenty years have passed since the adoption of this zoning, um, provision. Certainly, we know more about affordable housing and the need for affordable housing today. There is a provision in the memorandum of understanding that calls for, uh, to allow changes to the zoning and to the provisions of the memo of understanding, as long as we have town meeting approval. So it seems to me that if we're gonna move forward on this, there's a need for the planning board to change the premise, and ask the developer to see, what is the best proposal that he can come up with to meet the goals of the housing trust? And I think that would be an important step, and to involve the housing trust in those discussions. Secondly, leading the question of affordable housing, there are other aspects to this It seems to me that the review by the planning board should include the impact of the development on historic values, minimum open space, natural resources including specimen trees, as well as the impact on, um, adjoining properties. And I think that can be accomplished if the planning board continues to work with the housing trust, and to work with the Historic District Commission, and the Conservation Commission, and our planning department, as well as other town departments and townspeople in this review. So, I think that if we can move in those two directions, then we can do it right, and spend the necessary time to make sure that the resulting development meets the interests of both the town and McLean.
Thank you.
My name is Gary Simon. I'm, I'm a resident of, uh, Woodlands Two, which is Zone Two.
Right. Thank you, Gary. Um, my question is, when's your building gonna be open on Trappello Road? We've been going by it every day, and we see progress is being made.
Can you please talk to National Grid and get them to get going on my gas?
Yeah, yeah. Everybody's in the same.
I would appreciate that very much.
Everybody's in the same spot, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're plugging away.
Good luck.
It's, thank you. Uh, I'm not here in that capacity tonight, obviously. Uh, I'm a resident of Zone Two, I also serve on the, uh, the board. The first comment I want to make, uh, is that, uh, the zoning changes, the specific language in, what is it, Six A?
Yep.
Uh, I don't know when the, those changes came out, but I never got a, never got a chance to see them, and, and.
The red line ones?
Yeah.
Spencer, we've had these on, we've.
Several months now.
Yeah, this has been since at least the beginning of the year, and you would've had them online before meetings. So it'd be online in the planning board, uh, or the town clerk.
In, in this exact form?
Uh, the red line?
They were standing for the clerk on February twenty-sixth.
Yeah, so the red line, so the clerk, so these have been on since at least February, or they've.
Well, maybe shame on me, but, uh.
Well, that's okay. So, you have comments.
I guess the thing that concerns me is that, you know, clear, I, I, I mean, I'm sure somebody tried to take some care in putting these things together, but clearly there's some issues in the, in the language itself.
The, as my understanding is that McLean and their attorneys put this together in cooperation with the developers.
This is a proposal that's coming, I think there's been a misconception, this is a proposal that has come from McLean.
It's not coming from us.
It's coming from the planning board.
Okay.
We're reviewing it, holding hearings on this. So this isn't, the, the premise that, that Fred was pointing out is, is a little, little skewed. We're, we're, we're not.
These aren't your.
This is not.
This isn't your language that you're gonna vote on.
Not ours.
Yeah, and we haven't.
So, okay, so let me ask.
We haven't changed this yet, and you'll hear our comments shortly.
Let me ask the question, are, are you then gonna, gonna write up a proposed set of modifications so that we can see it?
Let us, let us answer that.
Okay.
After you have your comments.
Okay. Okay, well, my concern is that it would be, it would be nice to actually, you know, comment on specific language, rather than the developer's language.
We agree.
Okay. Well, I, I'm, I guess I'm concerned about the timing of all this thing. The hearing is now, you're gonna write up the language sometime, and, and what? We're not gonna have a, an opportunity to comment?
Everybody will have an opportunity to, to see the, um, the language on the proposed changes as they go along.
Okay.
And it'll be an open trend. Our processes are open and transparent, maybe they take a little bit longer than some people
That's fine.
would like, but everybody can see everything. We're not hiding anything.
I, I didn't say you were.
No.
I, I guess my concern was.
No, we're not.
The language seemed to be very, well, it's not your language, so you.
That's right.
I'm not insulting.
So, we disavow it.
I'm not insulting you, but.
We disavow it.
But, uh, you know, it's, it's very concerning. I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna come up and say, well, we endorse, you know, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five units, we don't want to leave ourselves open to the possibility of four hundred and eighty units if the, if the development doesn't go through. It seems to me that should be a done deal.
You're, you're echoing what Mr. Hammond said.
Good, all right. Let me make a couple more comments then. Zone Two, where we live, it's got sixty-two units.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just looking at the map. We're eleven point eighteen acres. Zone Three is twelve point eight-three acres. Nearly the same. I, I can tell you, just from living there for the last seven years, that we have a heck of a time locating our snow, getting rid of it. And, and, and the density that they're proposing on the zone next to us is double.
So, do you feel that your density is, is, is too high, or is it just snow?
Yes. I think the density's too high relative to, not only the housing, but we have to have a road, we have to have, uh, parking, uh, and, and driveway space, and when you finish with all that stuff, there's nowhere to put the snow. And in fact, Northland, as you know, developed that parcel as well, and, and we really have a deficiency, and, and we really need help in that regard to get it, get it fixed.
That's off top, that's off top.
I understand that. But I guess what I'm trying to do is give you the benefit of our experience.
Yes, and we will ask for that in a different venue.
So I think density is, is an issue. Density's an issue also in terms of parking. Zone Three and Zone Four have zero development on it now, yet, uh, there are times during parts of the day that you can't get, you can't get out of McLean's, you can't get out of it. It's, Mill Street is completely locked up in both directions, and you can't get off of, uh, McLean Drive. Also, Olmsted circles around and ends up coming down at the top of our development as we exit onto Mills, uh, McLean Drive, and they zip around, and, you know, 'cause they're coming off a hill, and, you know, we're lucky we don't get killed sometimes. But I guess my point is, there's a lot of traffic already. Zone Three, Zone Four get developed, it's critical that, uh, uh, traffic mitigation is really considered. Now, I know in the memorandum of agreement, there's a attachment, I think, I, that talks about, uh, traffic studies, and once that gets developed, they're supposed to do, uh, continuous, uh, monitoring?
Yes.
Okay. Has, has any consideration been to look at that, and, and what those numbers should be?
We're gonna talk about that.
I guess that's about it. I, I guess my biggest concern is that throughout this process, there's been a lot of talk about affordable housing, but no talk about our issues. And we're, we're the neighbors, and, and we sort of feel that, uh, uh, you know, I, I know we have the site plan review, but just listening to some testimony before, I'm, I'm even more concerned that we don't have an opportunity to be, to be heard in the, in the by, you know, have our, have our concerns addressed in the bylaws, so that, so that we, we can actually, uh, be protected.
I, I hear you.
Can you just, can we clarify that site plan review is still a functional tool for things like stormwater runoff, snow storage?
I understand that.
The, the question, it, maybe the previous planning board overstepped, that was, site plan review still works for these concerns that you're talking about?
Yeah. But, but it, it's, uh, so, it's absolutely right, there are, there are parts of these issues that are site plan review issues.
I understand.
They're outside the zoning per se.
Density is not, though.
But density is not, and in, and in terms of what the planning board does, and what our purview is, is that we represent the town as a whole, what, what we think is, uh, beneficial for the town as a whole. And we also, if you follow any of the meetings that, that we have in terms of things like dormers and new additions and all that, we listen very closely to the abutters and their ki- concerns. We have to weigh these things.
Right.
And however we finally get done, not everybody will be happy, but hopefully, we'll be able to get some.
I understand. I'm on the other side too, as you know, but.
Yeah, I know, so.
I, all I'm asking for is, you know, is a reasonable, like.
Consideration.
Exactly.
Yes, and.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments?
We were all standing in the back, it was just easier to be polite.
Yes.
Bonnie Friedman, precinct three. Um, I've been coming to, as you know, uh, most of the subcommittee meetings, I've been listening, um, glad to see that the bigger building has more affordable and smaller units than originally. But I left the last meeting discouraged that the, um, developer, and I'm sorry, I forgot his first name.
Yeah, darling.
Um, said he really didn't want to work with the town, and you, you're hearing lots of us say, we need more affordable units, more smaller units, um, and we want units that are good for our seniors. And I came to this, um, committee a few weeks ago saying that I keep thinking of all the seniors that I know that can't find any place to, when they want to downsize, that we're losing resources in our town that aren't just, um, financial in other ways, we're losing talent in our town when they have to move to other surrounding towns. And the League of Women Voters, for instance, um, I would say eighty percent of the people who, um, leave their home have left Belmont. Um, I don't think there's anyone who, ma- maybe it's even more than eighty percent, but none of them can find what they're looking for when they're downsizing. And we all know people like that, and, um, three thousand square foot homes of one and a half million or so is not what they're looking for. They're looking for modest homes, generally one floor, um, so they don't have to worry about accessibility, but they don't necessarily want to live in a building that has many floors and they hear lots of neighbors. And there are ways to build this housing to really appeal to the seniors who live in this town now, not to the seniors who don't live in our town. And I really hope that you take that into consideration, because this is our opportunity as we look at the, um, the zoning, and we've had such a relationship that, um, there are all these people in this room who worked on the original McLean plan, who want, who foresaw an option for their seniors to stay in Belmont, and I hope we really consider them when we, um, decide on this. Thank you.
Judy Fines, again, precinct five. I don't want to repeat all these really well-made points, but I do want to add one thing. We came across a plan that Northland and McLean had put together about a year ago, um, a different sketch for Zone Three, uh, that had two hundred and ninety-nine units, it had more flats and fewer townhouses. Uh, I think we, I'm pretty sure we sent that to the planning board.
No, the planning board has not seen that, and.
Well, we'll send it again in any event.
And it's not, it's not, Jack, is it a work product of yours? It's not a work project, product of McLean. Was, was, was that what you had referred to as a site potential build-out, what the infrastructure would support?
That was a student project.
It was a student project.
It was done by an engineering firm, and.
Yeah, we have not reviewed that, we, we have not vetted that, we can't comment on that.
No, no, and I don't expect you to.
I would ask you, I would ask you not to speak on that.
Well, then, without speaking on that in particular, what I would say is that a plan like that with more units, more flats, um, would definitely meet more of the housing needs for the seniors in town, and that with a shuttle bus would deal a lot with potential traffic issues, any additional traffic, and that would be an excellent starting place for different groups in town to begin to work together, so I do hope that Northland and McLean will be willing to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jean Mooney, town meeting member, precinct six. Just a quick suggestion for Simon perhaps, on the website, Belmont website, it would make it much easier to find the information if under the planning board section, you actually elevated that to a green tab, so for instance, you can go on that page now and find Waverly or Cushing Square, but this information right now is hidden under, it just says zoning amendment, so it's not intuitive for people to, to look there.
Green tag means we're working on it now? Is that what that means?
So, we currently have all of the current amendments that are being considered under 2019.
Right, but when you're looking like, you know, I'm sure Mr. Simon, when he went to look, if you had gone to that page and seen McLean...
Thank you, thank you.
You'd, you'd find it, so I think it's just...
We'll consider that.
The town website actually needs more help than that, but this would, is one way to help make it more transparent. Thank you.
We have no comment on...
Maybe subheads below the current zoning amendments, you could just list the three.
Madeline, come up and introduce yourself.
Madeline Fraser-Cook, precinct one. I'd like to re, I'm also a member of the Affordable Housing Trust. I'd like to reiterate the, the need for more affordable housing in the town and to...
Please, please speak into the microphone, or they can't hear you on TV.
Sure, I'm just a little, I was a little too short. The need for more affordable senior housing in particular, but, um, what I've been hearing a lot is the equation of density with traffic issues, and I would encourage all of us to have conversations around how you do density smartly, and how you can get more density without causing the traffic concerns that we, we all have in town. So, um, we have a lot of planning professionals, people who have done a lot of this work.
You're a planner, as I recall.
I am a planner, um, and I work a lot on smart growth issues, um, around the country, and, so I've seen a lot of best practices, and I think we have a lot of other professionals in town that have a lot of experience, both with planning and design and development, and we should work together. Again, I'd like to reiterate that point, because I think there's a depth of knowledge that, um, that is in this town that could really make a difference in, in coming to a compromise between the developer and, and the town's needs. So, that's my point on kind of density and planning, but I also have spent the last two days in conferences around net-zero energy building and passive house ideas, and it was really encouraging. There is a, a movement towards doing better, more energy-efficient building that meets our climate goals. The price, the incremental cost of doing so is coming down tremendously. There, we are fortunate to live in the Boston area where we have a wealth of knowledge around how to do it and how to do it cost-effectively, not only in market-rate buildings, multifamily and single-family, but also in the affordable housing community. And the state is certainly supporting a lot of this through, um, incentives, especially in the affordable housing community, and so that's another point I'd like to kind of bring to the table, and I think there's lots of opportunity to talk about integrating all these ideas, bringing the town, um, kind of brain trust to, to the table and working with, with the developer to come up with something that, that we can all support and, and move forward with together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Charlie, I, I promise this is my last one.
Would you like me to get you a chair and you can sit beside us here?
Well, I just actually, to follow up on this comment, actually, last night in the town hall auditorium, there was the first joint meeting of the Belmont Democratic Town Committee, the Republican Town Committee, and Sustainable Belmont, and Senator Brownsberger and Representative Rogers were there, correct, thank you. Senior moment, I'll be moving in soon.
If you can find your way.
If I can find my way, right. And actually, a, a great amount of the conversation that Senator Brownsberger brought up was a point about density, and the fact that, you know, here we are in Belmont, and, and about transportation, and this very issue of smart density, and how developing out our transportation to handle that very issue. And whereas I will, you know, admit 20 years ago that, you know, you worry about numbers and traffic and all these things, but I think Belmont does have an opportunity to even talk to broader, talking about brain trusts and speaking with our legislators about this very issue, our, our buses and our trains, to make these things work, because that, recent studies that he brought forth were on this, on this very issue. So, so density can, can work if, if, if we plan for it properly.
Thank you. Mr. Colton?
One last comment. Roger Colton, town meeting member, precinct six. As I have sat here listening to people's comments, one of my concerns is that you might walk away, or listeners might walk away thinking that people are expressing only their personal opinions about the need for smaller, more affordable housing for our aging, our aged, but the fact is that there was a whole public process that the Council on Aging went through in order to have the town of Belmont achieve the age-friendly community designation, which the town accepted this afternoon, I believe, in this, in this very room. But having had the Council on Aging engage in this public process with multiple, uh, public meetings and lots of folks providing input, the conclusion was that the need of the town was for smaller, more affordable housing, and it wasn't when people talked about more affordable housing, there is a need for affordable housing as defined, which is a defined term of art, but the, what came out of the age-friendly, uh, community process was smaller, more affordable housing than, than would be met by $1.5 million condominiums, but there's just this whole public process that I hope you take into account, and if you do do what I recommended, which is to slow the process down, bring in the various stakeholders, one of the stakeholders that hasn't been met, and perhaps I'm sensitive to this because my wife sat on the Council on Aging for 10 years, but the Council on Aging very much would be a, a stakeholder that has taken positions and, uh, under, undergone public processes relating to the housing need for that set of Belmont's population. Thank you.
Rachel?
Hi, Rachel Heller, again, co-chair of the Housing Trust.
Quick question.
Yes.
When's the housing scorecard coming out from the DuQuarkus?
Uh, it will be coming out, it's expected in about two or three months.
Sooner would be better than later.
Sooner would be better, it would definitely be helpful. I just wanna highlight, I absolutely agree that we need more homes for seniors, uh, without a doubt. One of the other needs that was really highlighted in our housing production plan is the need for affordable homes for families with children. And so, I know that this is no longer an age-restricted proposal, I do wanna say, like Betsy had called out, I get very concerned when we talk about housing that's attractive to a particular population and not to others, and I just think it's important that we look at this development and, this is still an opportunity, and provide a diversity of options. One, two, three bedrooms, affordable, smaller, uh, all of those things are important, so I just think we need to, yes, senior housing, absolutely, and there's also needs for families with children. So, I will close with that for tonight. And also, one more thing, the families with children can't be here tonight because they're all home with their kids and it was really hard to get out, and so I think that's one of the reasons why we're not hearing about that.
Jessie, introduce yourself.
I hate talking up into the microphone, so I'll take it. I'm Jessie Bennett, I'm a town meeting member in precinct one. I would say that as a town meeting member, I'd be very concerned about voting on these changes as they stand right now, just in terms of the fact that we actually have a great deal of power in town meeting to decide what happens with this parcel, in that we have a very restricted zoning in place right now, and so in order to go back and change that, to get this 1.6 million a year in taxes, which is very tempting, you know, I would wanna make sure that this parcel of land was being used in a way that actually meets our needs in town, so we don't have this kind of power to, I mean, we're not dictating, but to encourage zoning changes that will help us meet our needs, you know, on a parcel of land like this, this is a very limited opportunity for us, and so as a town meeting member, I'm very, um, I, I'm very skeptical of this plan as one that really will meet Belmont's needs, and I think that, I, I agree with Roger in that, I, I would like to see this process slowed down, I don't, I don't think that this is the right proposal right now to meet the needs of Belmont in terms of the affordable housing and in terms of, you know, meeting the needs of the housing production plan. So, I really wanna encourage the developer to be talking with stakeholders in town because they are going to need town meeting's approval to, to make these changes, so.
Are there any other comments? Let me, then I'm gonna open it up to the board. Ed, so we've, uh, we've, we've talked about what's on the table, we've had, um, a number of comments, what's your thought for, for what we should do from this point, or where are we?
It's a broad, a broad intro.
Other than the specific, yeah.
I mean, I, I think the, the commenters have raised a number of issues with, with the language, that it doesn't seem to have been tailored to fit the specific, the, the proposed project, if you will, like we have still have the 480 units in there. When I've done zoning changes before, I know the, the inclination is to change as little as possible in the text, 'cause it makes it easier for people to see what's new and what's being changed, but in this case, I think you almost might, you might wanna consider a total rewrite for, for zone three. Another concern is just how do we, how do we define these senior-directed units, if we're not gonna divide, if we're not gonna define them as a, with a specific age? You know, how, how do you, how do you define them by a certain decor or a certain, certain amenities that appeal to seniors? It just seems like it's very hard to define, and it might, well, I'm, I'm sure that the current developer would intend to do what he says he's doing, and say, in the future, if, if the project passes on to another developer, I think it leaves it open to interpretation and potential, for potential changes as, as written there. So, I, I think in general, I agree that there's, there's a lot of work to do here. I don't know that, I don't know that we'll make it, but...
Carl? I think there's a real need to match up the discussion about density with transportation. The McLean parcel has defined entrance and exit points, and if we're going to increase density on that parcel beyond what was approved in the original or in the current one that we've seen today, we need to do something serious, or it will continue to be a serious traffic problem morning and evening, and I, I think, I think the density has to recognize solving not just the housing part of it, but also the transportation part. Yeah, I, I, I think what's a particular issue is that while the proposal, you know, is reducing the, the number of units and the density, what the developer has talked about, the zoning changes themselves don't do that. The zoning changes still could potentially, if, um, you know, if, if let's say we said, "This is a great project, let's do this," and five years from now, you know, the markets all collapse, and somebody else comes in, they could, they could develop it to the full, to the full thing, I think that's a concern. Thank you. There, do you have any comments?
Another piece of it besides the density is, I mean, some of the details, there's, you can put 350 outdoor parking spaces, which seems like a lot of outdoor parking spaces to me, and it's, you know, it's not sustainable, it's, there are a lot of issues around paving that much. But I, I think zoning itself, both districts actually need some...
Could I just ask?
Steve? No, we're, we're...
We can't hear her.
Oh, oh.
Sorry. Yeah.
You have to lean into the mic.
Yeah, you have to get really close. I, I think I'm sort of reiterating what they were saying about just, there are too many issues in the zoning that haven't been resolved, one of which I noticed besides the density was your, um, the underlying zoning has 350 surface parking spaces in each zone, actually, which is a lot of parking. And I, you know, I just, I think it's a big issue. I, I'm not sure in this day and age we'd allow, or we'd, we'd wanna promote that much outdoor paving and parking.
Thank you. Steve?
Just following up on that, more, more parking means more cars that have to go through a, a pretty tight funnel up on the hill there. I, I think that, that McLean's done a, a, a pretty interesting job of, of responding to, to an economic problem, basically. I mean, I, I see this as a, as a, a reason, a well-thought-out response to an economic reality that, and the, and the reality is that the, the, the original development can't be done, and the zoning doesn't respond to that, to, to a change in that. I mean, a, a large elder housing, assisted living housing, that is not an economic reality, that's not, not something that's feasible, it would've been done were it feasible, and so the, the challenge here is to try to find something that meets McLean's economic needs, and, and I see how the, the pieces of the puzzle fit together in that. The, the townhouses fund, to some extent subsidize the, the affordable housing in the, in the garden apartments, and all of the revenue from that goes to support expansion of the school facility, which is a, a, a revenue generator for the, for, for McLean's, and, and is an important piece of things, and ultimately gives the opportunity potentially to develop the research facility. I get that, and, and I, and I do like the, the reduction in size, but, um, there are obviously a lot of moving parts to this, and, and one of them is the agreement that the town has with McLean writ large, and without, we, that, that is going to require a renegotiation to respond to all of the concerns that everybody in this room has, has talked about. And in the next two weeks, number one, we don't have time to write the zoning amendment that will respond to the, the larger issues going on here. I mean, what's been proposed here is, is, is satisfactory toward meeting what you guys need for a change, but there are a lot of issues here, obviously, in terms of density and, and interest in affordable housing and et cetera, that, that need to be vetted among a half a dozen entities in town, and frankly, right now, we don't have time to do that before we get to the point where we've got to put forth a zoning amendment to town meeting that will pass by a two-thirds majority. We can't craft that, this won't pass by a two-thirds majority. I mean, just listening to this room, we, we're not there. I mean, and, and it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's satisfactory from, from your perspective, but from our perspective, I don't think it meets all of the zoning challenges that we have, let alone all of the sort of societal issues that we've been raising here, and, and the, the finer points of the agreement that the town has writ large, that the Board of Selectmen have to be, we haven't even mentioned them in this meeting, and we've talked about the Housing Trust, we've talked about Council on Aging, we've talked about all the other entities, the Board of Selectmen has to weigh in on this. I mean, it's, it's a real important challenge to them, I think, to, to, because it, it changes the nature of our agreement with McLean's writ large. So, my sense is that we do not have time to litigate all of this in time to put forth a zoning amendment for the spring town meeting. I, I just don't see how that can happen. We've got too many pieces, too many people need to be heard, we need to have many more hearings on this, and, and other entities need to have hearings as well, so I would propose that we pause on this, I think.
I agree with you, I think, I think, um, I think McLean can do better on this, and I think Belmont can do better as well. I would, I would suggest that we close the public hearing at this point. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. Do I hear a motion not to bring these amendments to town meeting?
I would move not to bring these to town meeting, to this, to, to spring town meeting.
To spring town meeting, and that we, and that we pursue with interested entities, including the developer and McLean, a rewriting of this to get an acceptable proposal to town meeting, hopefully in the fall. and McLean rewriting of this to get an acceptable, uh, proposal to town meeting, hopefully in the fall.
In the fall.
Do I hear a second? All in favor? Thank you. We will continue our discussions with you. Thank you, everybody. The, the, the meeting is over.